It's 6:30. I'll call the meeting to order. There's all the selectmen here, town manager, and the town clerk is here. We have people in the waiting room to join us later on. Please stand with me and salute the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under the invisible liberty and justice for all.
You have the approval of the May 26 meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion? I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And myself is yes, and Mark was not there, so he can recuse himself. Patty, did we have anything for public comment?
No, we don't.
Okay, we have no public hearing. We might as well jump right down to the appointment for the sewer board district director. Stephanie Roche-Fort is currently serving. And she's asking to be reappointed. And we also have Ken Powers, who would like to be appointed. Now, we only have the one opening?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I thought. So, is... Ken, why don't you give us a bit of your background?
Well, I was in finance for 20 years. I worked in a loan office. I manage the office up in Scarborough. So, I did that for 20 years. I stopped doing that in November to become a full-time realtor in North Carolina. Basically, that's it. I did the same job for 20 years and then stopped and taken a different path, kind of, doing the real estate business. And that's basically what I do. I volunteered at the middle school football program for five or six years. Now, I'm working, I'm up at the high school coaching up there now. So, that's what I've been up to. When I spoke today, earlier today, he had said that there were two openings also. So, I don't know if there's just one. There's just one. I was under the impression there were two.
There is just one, correct?
That's what I have.
Yeah, that's what I thought, that we had the others. What makes you interested in the sewer?
Well, I'd like to get involved with the town. That's basically what I... My goal is to get involved somehow. And I mean, this is on a very limited basis, once a month meetings, things like that. But that's my primary goal, to get involved with the town. And this seemed like a really promising good way to do it.
Anybody have questions for Ken?
Nope.
No? All right, thank you, Ken. Stephanie?
Thank you.
How you doing, Stephanie?
I'm good, and how are you today?
Not too bad. You've served for three years on the district, and you expressed interest in being reappointed.
And first, I do want to clarify that we have two openings. At our last meeting, Dustin said that he was not going to be continuing because he has signed up for another volunteer opportunity. And I guess that he didn't do the official notification, but he did tell us that at our last meeting.
So, we may have two openings.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll make it a little bit easier. Well, Stephanie, just fill us in a little bit about what's been going on for the last three years.
Well, there has been great strides in the last three years. When I was first on the board, there was a lot of disconnect between the employees of the Burwick Sewer District, the worker bees at the plant level, and the board. And now, having people on board, we have, everyone has different talents. And what I bring to it is I have the wastewater background. So, I'm helping the communication between the rest of the board and the employees, where I can say, yes, this is a need. Yes, this is, he's not feeding you a line. This really needs to happen. We've been able to stress some. In the wastewater field, the top three things are safety, compliance, and then money. And I know that might not be what your board wants to hear, but we're very proud that we have a wonderful safety record, and we've been able to make a lot of improvements for the safety of the employees. We have a wonderful compliance record. We work, you know, I came in with this whole cloud over us with the Clean Water Act violation, and we're getting a much better... Goodness, the public and the regulators for the state of Maine are very impressed with the place now. And we are able to do that in a cost-effective and staying-on-budget manner. And I just feel like the board is in a really good place now, and I want to stick with it.
Any questions for Stephanie? No? Well, we hear that there are two openings. We only have one official opening. But what we can do is we can appoint Ken, you know, as a trustee pending the resignation of Dustin. It was one way we could do it. Does anybody have any questions or ideas on that?
No, seems like a reasonable situation or recommendation. I think that, from my perspective, I think Stephanie, you have the background that I'm looking for, and somebody who's serving in that position. I think, Ken, I really appreciate you pointing out to take that position, if it is available. I would certainly think that you would have some experience that they could benefit from. So, if that, if there are two positions, I think they're both certainly great candidates and well-qualified to do so.
Anybody else? Well, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Stephanie.
I motion to reappoint Stephanie?
There's a motion and a second. I'll go through the roll. Is Mark?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. It's 5-0, Patty. And for Ken, like I said, we can appoint you with the understanding that when we have the official resignation from Dustin, then you can fill in. So, do I have a motion?
So, moved.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? I'll go through the roll. Is Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. 5, nothing, Patty. Thank you both. I look forward to working with you in the future.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have nothing unfinished business? Town managers report.
I have a few things. Just so everybody's aware, the town office hours, we've adjusted those. We started with a little bit different hours, but now we're trying to get everybody back to 37 and a half hours. So, the town office will be open Monday through Wednesday from 8 to 5:30. And then, on Thursdays, from 8 to 7, the office will be closed to the public at 6 o'clock on Thursdays, just so that the staff gets an opportunity to close up drawers and balance. Fridays, we're going to be closed for the time being, and we'll readdress that as this pandemic hopefully slows down. Also announced is on June 30th, the office will be closed. It's the end of the year for us, and there's a lot of work to be done. So, we close out our books and prepare for the audit. The auditors have been doing a, I'd say they're in, but they're doing it remotely, doing a three- or four-day pre-audit. Lisa Vargas, extremely busy. I sent you out a request about the flagpole at the fire station. Has anybody had an opportunity to think about that and what they want to do for the car that was destroyed? It was, the car value was only around $2,000. And the value was anywhere between $5,000 and $2,000. The person's hoping to see $1,300. Who'd have thought? Also, I've had several, I've had a request about looking to buy the old fire station once we move into the new one. I'm not sure what the asking price is. I know I've had one of the realtors give me a price of around $250,000 to $300,000 in value, but there wasn't really much to compare it with. But think about that, because the new station, we are expecting it to be moved in September. They're making great progress. And if you haven't been able to see the site, it's quite an attractive building. It's going to be very functional. Also, I sent out to you the library memorandum of agreement. If it passes on the warrant on the 14th, you'll have to approve that on the June 23rd. It's been through our attorneys. We've been through several rewrites and back and forth. And this last one, the lawyers felt that it was covering everything that they felt we should have, so it was good to go. So, take a chance, take an opportunity to read through that, and let me know if you have any questions. We also hired a new recreation director, Isaac Spivey. He is coming from Vermont originally. He worked for the city of Colchester for quite a few years, five or six years, in their department. His wife took a job in New Hampshire, at University of New Hampshire in Durham. And he was looking to transition. And he was one of four candidates in the final interviews. And we've offered him the position, and he has accepted it. He'll be starting July 1st. And first meeting we have, I'll make sure we introduce him to you, either Zoom or in live. There was also a question about the two-hour parking limit over in front of the Subway and Devon Duke's Cold Brook Brewing, or Coldstone Brewing. It's really restricting their customers to get to over there. But so, it's something that we've had in place. We put up new signs, and nobody was really realizing it was a two-hour limit. And now, they are, at the request of the owners of the buildings, at Devon Duke and Subway. So, that's something that you, as a board, have to decide if you want to change that or not. James has been doing research on the Rochester Street parking that was done in the traffic study. He sent out the information to the police and fire. And both departments object to changing the traffic pattern there, one being that fire trucks may have difficulty getting up through there if they have to. There's only one lane, and there's quite a bit of traffic. And the police felt the same way. MDOT, though, gave us the nod that we could do that. And we were waiting for a written document saying that we could do that. So, that's being questioned. And I know we've looked at that over the last year, opening up that side of the road in Rochester Street to parking next to the town office. So, it's something we're going to have to address pretty soon. Right now, Norris has been in the building. They were there today, I take it, Patty?
Yes.
They're putting in a new entry keypad, security keypad, along with smoke alarms. The building has not had smoke alarms, and we finally have smoke alarms. So, they said they'll be done, I guess, next week, that we budgeted for that, and that is in. Great Falls Construction got back to me about the credit enhancement agreement. They have a different attorney than what they had before, but we're setting up a meeting with our attorney, Jana Cook Mueller from Bernstein Shore, who writes these credit enhancements agreements, and they've changed since the last one she did. So, we're setting up in the end of the month to meet Great Falls and myself, James, and Tom, you're invited. But it should be a good meeting. It seems like we're all on the same page, but we'll see how it goes. So, that's all I have for today.
Have you met the superintendent, Steve, from Great Falls?
I haven't.
They've been there all week. They're working on the duplex.
Oh, I haven't been up there. I thought they were...
They called me. They're looking for an electrician, and they're looking for help. So, if anyone needs a job, cotton or whatever, they're looking for both.
Yeah, huh.
So, it sounds like you're going to get the duplex up and running.
Oh, okay, because I know that they were talking to somebody about buying it from them. But that's good. I didn't realize they were there. Good to know. So, there's a meeting. They're having another public forum later this month. So, James and I are hoping we'll see renditions for what their plans are. Pretty exciting, but we're moving forward with that, and that's a good sign. That's all I have.
So, how many people from the town, how many people from Burwick are still working from home?
Nobody. The quote enforcement officer is probably the only one, but she has office hours, and she also has by appointment only. But she's busy. There's a lot of building going on. She's out on our fire station site quite a bit. And she's tough as nails, so she's doing a good job. But she's available. And her hours are on the website. And also, if you call into the office, we can tell you what her hours are. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Let's talk a little bit about the flagpole damage in that car over at the fire station. That happened a couple of months ago. And I'd like to put this to bed as soon as possible. I'm really upset that the insurance company won't cover this. I cannot imagine their reasoning, but Steve said he had quite a few arguments with them, and they won't budge on us. I think we owe the person, you know, compensation for the car. I know I'd asked Steve for the last couple of weeks to get a price from the people. You said about $1,300, Steve?
That's what they're looking for, yeah.
It was like a 2002...
Honda Civic.
Honda Civic? So, probably more money than I'd pay for a Honda Civic, but I wouldn't buy a Honda Civic anyways.
I agree with Tom. We should be taking care of that. There shouldn't be any argument about it. We should take care of it. What happens to...
Anything with the town?
Get more insurance? Another company to insure us?
MMA covers us at a very reasonable rate. And it's the same thing that happened with another insurance company. They're going to utilize the Torque Claim Act and say that it's something that we weren't responsible for. So, I've had this, it's just, to me, it doesn't make any sense.
No, it's bullshit.
The kids, did he have car insurance? Does the car insurance cover it at all?
No, I doubt he had collision. He probably has, he has to have liability, so...
Was the car registered in New Hampshire?
I don't think so. I don't know.
Well, no, I thought I had heard someplace it was, because you don't need insurance in New Hampshire. That's one of the things. That's why a lot of people register in New Hampshire, because you don't need to have insurance.
Where did we get the figure of $1,300 from?
I looked it up in the Blue Book. She gave me the number for $1,300. I looked it up in the Blue Book, and it ranged from 500 to 2,000. It depends on mileage, of course.
Yeah, it depends on that particular vehicle. They're horrendous for transmission issues. But I mean, that's besides the point. It was not his fault. It's a town property. Our flagpole collapsed on his vehicle. You know, it's due to either lack of maintenance or whatever. It's not his fault, so...
It rusted through. It was a metal tire.
So, we might as well. I mean, it's cheaper to pay it than go through an insurance company anyway, because then it's just going to increase our rates. So, pay it and put it to bed.
Steve, where would money from something like that come from?
Contingency.
Contingency, okay. So, it seems like the consensus is that we need to do something. One other thing that, you know, you mentioned, Steve, was the Rochester Street parking. You're talking about alongside the town hall here, correct?
Yes.
And you said the police chief and fire chief said that, no, they thought it would restrict the traffic flow through there too much?
An inability for the fire trucks to get up through if traffic was backed up. I understand their point. It's, they're probably...
When James and I were out there last year with, I can't remember his name, doing the, looking at the crosswalks and parking and things, is we measured across there, and it's, the total width of the road is more than three lanes of traffic, you know? And so, if we took up just part of it with eight feet with parking space, you're still going to have more, two lanes worth of traffic, open roadway there. So, no, we'll look at it again. We'll take some measurements, but I think it can be managed. I think it's something that we need to utilize.
Well, Tom, look at South Burwick. They park on both sides of the road for the stores, the fire trucks. So, I mean, that's parked on both sides. We won't be on one side.
Right, so... And one thing that Patty and I talked about before the meeting is, we wondered if you were going to bring it up, Steve, was, the vote is July 14th now, and that is one of our regular meeting dates. So, in the past, we have, you know, only held one meeting in July. I don't know if there's going to be anything too major coming up in July, Steve? Do you have a feeling for that?
It shouldn't be.
So, maybe that's something that we want to look at, just having one meeting in July, you know?
Have it the second meeting.
Yeah, so...
August, you're going to have a tax commitment coming up, and the budget will pass, so we'll see what that brings, hopefully. One of the things I wanted to bring up is also, is I sent you all the financial reports for the end of May. If you have any questions, revenue side looks like it's coming in pretty good. It's the following next year that I'm a little worried about, but the governor opened up everything for July 1st, so maybe we'll still get our tourists. But otherwise, we're a little over in the transfer station and public works, but otherwise, we're pretty much on track. And we had it over in the building, but I gave you a rundown of areas to look at. Any questions, let me know. We'll give Lisa Vargas a call.
Thank you, Steve.
Hey, Steve, I see in the paperwork that Patty sent over, we cut a check for almost $900,000 to Landry French.
Yeah, close to that.
Yeah, what, are they getting like that once a month? You're not going to let them get overextended with us, right? I mean, they're not going to...
No, they're up to date. They're up to date. We still have just under $3 million left to finish up what they've done. And they're right on track. They're making sure that their contractors are getting paid, from what I can tell.
Oh, yeah. I just don't want to see them front-load it.
No, no, we're, we have, the next meeting we have with them in July is going to be a budget, another budget meeting. But they, anytime I request budget numbers, Nick gets it right to me. So, I keep an eye on it. And I want to make sure they get paid, because they have, you know, they have a lot of people working over there. And I know Nick was saying on some of the sites that they have, people have been sick, and they're behind schedule because of shortage of people because of the pandemic. But we've been fortunate to have everybody healthy and getting the work done. Looks nice.
And speaking about the fire station and the budget, you know, we had a budget breakdown a week or so ago. And even with the add-ons that we weren't expecting, we're still very close to being on budget. Because right now, I think we're just slightly over, but we're looking at some other savings down the road. So, I'm really happy with what's been going on.
Yeah. Plus, if you look at your financial reports, you'll see the bond, and you'll see the interest we've earned from having that sit there and coming out slowly. We've done very well. So, we definitely should come in on budget. And they're very aware of that, that we want them to come in on budget. And they're looking for savings all the time.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Yep.
I have no communications. It brings us to the account payable. I have a payroll warrant, 2049, for June 4th, 2020, for the amount of $61,392.65. I have a payroll warrant, 2050, from June 11th, 2020. The amount is $60,056.75. And account payable warrant, 2050, for June 11th, 2020. This is one, Mark, where we paid both Landry French and the school. So, we have an amount of $1,661,739.73. I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
No.
I'll go through the roll. Mark?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you. The request for the extension of the license for the Corner Point Bruin has been pulled. That has already been taken care of through the planning board, I guess. So, next is for the setting the polling hours for July 14th town election. The town clerk is going to recommend 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And she's also going to request that the town offices be closed that day, correct, Patty?
Yes, thank you. And then, I'll need a motion that you'll cancel your July 14th meeting.
Right.
So, we have a motion.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Three.
I'll second.
All right, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we need a vote to close the town office on July 14th.
I'll move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
I'll go through the roll again. Is Noah?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So, our next item is a poll petition from Central Main Power. 75 Pine Hill Road is, looks like they want to take an existing pole and move it about 80 feet. They seem to be moving a lot of poles lately, but they won't move the one at the end of our new access road, Steve. How come?
Well, they have permission to do, they have 25 new poles placed throughout this area. And so, they're going to be using, they've asked Great Falls if they could stage at their parking lot, and they're very happy to be able to do that. So, but 25, and hopefully, one of them is out, going in for the new station.
Why can't we take that pole out on that one way going down to Route 9 from the police station? Beside your old school, that road comes out, there's a damn pole right in the middle of it?
Oh.
Why can't that be moved?
That was supposed to be moved during that project with Bateman.
Right.
And somehow, it slipped under the radar and never got moved. And, you know, so I believe that the developer was supposed to pay to have that moved. And good luck in trying to get that money from them.
Unbelievable.
Yeah. We have a...
I'm looking at the request. Are they moving a pole or are they adding a new pole? Because I kind of think it's a new pole. The drawing says new CMP pole seventy five A.
It just looks like an additional pole.
Oh, I see. Yeah. I thought they were moving one. Yep. No, it is a new pole.
I'm moving, accept the pole permit from CMP as, as presented.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
No.
Is, go through the roll is Mike?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Five zero Patty.
Thank you.
We have nothing else on our agenda is is I'll put it out there to Patty that she will need people to come in and sign warrants as soon as possible.
And the poll petition. And also just to note, the school rescinded their original warrant. There's now a new warrant which combines. There's now going to be four questions for voters. They will be having their public hearing on that on June twenty third. That'll be over Zoom. People can follow in or zoom in. But anyway, there'll be more information out on that, but I have new warrants to sign for that.
Is that's the same night as our next meeting also, correct?
Yes. So Steve Connolly will not be attending our meeting anyway.
When, when do we get to meet the new superintendent?
Is that she takes over in July first, I believe, is the same, I believe they have the same fiscal year is when she takes over. Is, I don't know, is I'll be seeing her on, on Friday. Is they've asked BCTV, the Noble High School has asked BCTV to help them stream out their graduation ceremonies. So that'll be happening on Friday afternoon and.
Could you ask her, Tom, if she could come to a meeting some night?
Sure. I'm sure, I'm glad, I'm sure she'd be glad to.
Yep.
Good. So any other business for anybody?
Tom, the twenty third is also our public hearing for our budget, is it not?
Yes.
It is.
Yes. Yeah. And, and we still have to decide how we're going to manage that one, you know, with whether we're going to, you know, do it similar to what the planning board has been doing and doing it a combination of live and Zoom. And, but that's something we'll talk about in the next week. So.
Yeah, there won't be a vote at the school public hearing. Like typically each town goes and votes on each question. This will just be a public hearing. People can ask questions, but there will be no vote. The voting this year will happen at the poll. It'll be a secret ballot. Their sample ballot is up on our website. So people can look at that under departments, town clerk elections. And there's a link.
And speaking of, speaking about elections, Patty, thank you, is, no, is I just want to remind people to take advantage of the absentee ballots if you can, you know, save the polling people here on July, in July, so that we can have as many people mail in their ballots as possible.
Yep. That information's also on the website.
Yep. Anything else? We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Thanks a lot, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Night.